The demolition of the San Siro is upon us, or is it? And is it the right thing to do? Are we going to lose all that history? Joining me here in London, Emmett Gates, Dan Cantian here with David Farini. Glad to have you back. Emmett, what's going to happen? We've been to the San Siro so many times, such an iconic venue. But Dan, you've written an awesome piece. It's on destinationculture.com and it is about the ruling in Milan. I'll hand over to you right now. Get into it.
Yeah, so Milan City Council voted after 12 hours of deliberation. Just imagine the amount of coffee that must have sunk.
A marathon session.
Marathon session, yeah, ended like at 10 to 4 a.m. They basically voted in favour of selling the San Siro and the land the San Siro is built on and the car park next to the San Siro.
Sacred ground.
Yeah, they agreed to sell that to the clubs for 192 million euros, which is a figure to keep in mind, we'll come back to it later on. So effectively AC Milan and Inter Milan now have 40 days to get the banks to finance these deals, close the deal. And then they can knock the San Siro down, they'll knock 90% of it down. We should point out that this stage, there are, there are plans, but there is not a concrete project just yet. Both clubs have signed agreements with architects. One of the companies have signed in agreement with this company that redeveloped Wembley. The plan is to knock down the San Siro, build a new one on the car park of the current stadium, just as Spurs did with Whiteout Lane, they basically built something right next door, just as the New York Yankees did with the old Yankee Stadium. Is it the right decision? Financially, almost certainly. Is it the right decision from a historical standpoint? Almost certainly not.
The car park, Emmett, I mean, where are people going to park in the meantime if they're going to go to the San Siro, all those journalists? But behind you, the Milan, the Italy and the Inter kits, all those years of history are about to be torn down. In your opinion, the right thing to do or not?
I'm torn. My heart says no, because even though it is rough around the edges.
My mind is telling me no.
Exactly. It's still, when you come up out of the San Siro metro and the stadium just like opens up in front of you, it's still a magnificent, I've been going to the San Siro for 20 years.
Gives you chills every time.
And every time it doesn't lose its aura. You know, they speak of aura these days, the San Siro still has the aura about it. So my heart says, from an historical monument of a cathedral, a football cathedral is what it is.
It's a small thing cathedral.
Yeah, so from that perspective, no, I don't want it to be torn down. From thinking from ahead, it's, both clubs believe they need a new stadium to stay relevant.
And they know best.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think if you look at their matchday revenue, the last full season for both teams' accounts, Inter made 80 million euros and I think Milan made 85 million euros in matchday revenue.
Dan, in that piece, you've actually spoken about the Premier League revenue compared to Serie A. I can't remember the overall figure, but I'm pretty sure it dwarfed, it was like three times more.
Oh, it's incomparable, yeah, like it's apples and oranges and like the, the Bernabeu, which Real Madrid last season, there was the first, was it the first season or the second season they played at the fully renovated Bernabeu? They brought in 360 million quid worth of matchday revenue. That is just matchday revenue. There are Italian clubs that don't even scratch the surface of that in like, when you add TV rights and everything else. And I think this is the issue with the San Siro. The San Siro is a symbol of how dysfunctional Italian football is.
Here we go, Emmett, let's go.
The reason why this is such a hot debate with the San Siro is because Milan, Italy's richest city, arguably Italy's most iconic city when it comes to football, will not, as things stand, be hosting any matches in Euro 2032.
That's disgraceful.
A tournament in itself that Italy can't host on its own and has to host with Turkey and as we know, Turkey and Italy are very close, you know, they're like close neighbours.
But I think the infrastructure is probably about the same.
No, but Turkey, Turkey have built more stadiums in the last 15 years than Italy has in the last 30.
They're actually going to pull it up.
Yeah, and there is, there is a real threat now that Italy lose co-hosting duty and Turkey will soldier the responsibility themselves. Like that's how desperate things have got.
Rightfully so, exactly.
Well, they should, because when we, when you look at like, the landscape of Italian football, Italian football stadium in particular, the Juventus stadium is the only stadium that is currently considered a five star stadium by UEFA.
UEFA did compile the report recently and Uve's stadium was the only one that basically can host any matches.
The New Balance Arena in Bergamo is a lovely new ground.
It's too small.
It's spectacular, it's small and it's, I don't, it's not that it already looks dated, but it looks, it's like when you buy an iPhone and it's been refurbished. It's brand new for you, but it's not actually brand new, is it? And it's the same thing with the Dacia Arena in Udina, again, lovely new ground, just the European Super Cup, but it's not big enough for a.
Yeah, because the minimum requirement by UEFA is 30,000 seats, so that rules out Udine and rules out Bergamo.
Yeah, and I did some, I did some digging, Brighton about the San Siro. By Italian standards, the Mappe Stadium in Reggio Emilia is a new ground. The Mappe Stadium was built in 1994. It's tiny, you need to walk across the field to get into the ground.
And you can watch Reggiana Serie B live on the DCTV app, thank you for that.
Those, that's what I mean when I said the San Siro is a symbol of how dysfunctional Italy, Italy and infrastructure are. Like Serie A relies on grounds that were built ju- just after.
Italian indeed.
That were refurbished for Italian, they were built like during the fascist era.
Yeah.
Some of them, there is a reason why some of them are named after the World War heroes, because that was.
And so many of them are now so old, they've passed into national monument status and can't be touched, like the Frankie in Florence.
Frankie and the diggers and you know, it's like it's playing on the building side, it's just ridiculous. And yes, on that front, that's why AC Milan and Inter Milan want to knock down the San Siro.
If you look at Arsenal, Arsenal pull in 150 million euros a season on matchday revenue. Inter and Milan, you could claim are both bigger teams than Arsenal and they will play, they play currently in a far bigger stadium. But because Arsenal stadium is plush and new, they can charge more ticket sales, they can buy better players and it's a cycle.
It's a cycle, like you look at the Serie A champions playing a stadium that down until last season, some parts of it could not be used because they were dangerous, it's mad. Imagine like, you know, Arsenal or Chelsea or Liverpool or Barcelona, well Barcelona are rebuilding their ground. Imagine the Bernabeu being closed, like every sector is closed because they might crumble.
I've got a question from a socio-economic impact point of view. In Italy and many other countries, the stadium is the church, the football faithful. They need somewhere to go. Yes, you can tear them down and rebuild them. And as we see with the San Siro, the new proposed one, they're going to reduce the amount of seating in there. What's going to happen to ticket prices at the San Siro? And what would happen considering the average wage in Italy is so low? If you want to make compares, comparisons to something like Scotland or England, what's going to happen to the average Joe, or Giuseppe in this case, that wants to buy a ticket to see his local football team play because they've rebuilt a stadium? Is it going to double in price?
They'll get priced out.
He can't take his family.
They'll get priced out just to be priced out in England because.
And is that the right thing to do then?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
But I think it's not just in terms of banning a ticket, the new stadium, the plans are to have hotels, a shopping centre, a museum, all that will feed in to the clubs as opposed to going to the city council or, you know, they may keep the ticket prices the same, but all the extras will go to the clubs rather than there being none of that there and they're not getting any.
I think the elephant in the room here is the price that I mentioned earlier.
The elefante.
The city council, Milan City Council are selling prime real estate for 192 million euros to two clubs that are owned by American hedge funds. Now, Milan is not a, a city that is cheap by any standards, it might be slightly cheaper than London.
There's conditions with that though, it's conditional, everything's conditional, Dan. So if they're going to sell them that cheap to two clubs, the condition would be you have to spend the, what is it, 1.2 billion?
1.2 billion euros.
Sure, but it's still a ridiculously low price. To, for, to put in, into context, United won their development, Old Trafford, the land that they need to buy, they are open to buy, they're being quoted 500 million pounds for that.
Sure.
This is a fraction of that price. And there are already rumours and appears will be launching Italy about this because a lot of people in Milan, within the city council and within average citizens are effectively questioning whether there is, this is the city council just getting rid of land for too little a price.
The land is owned by the council, right?
It is.
So it's probably being valued by, obviously you have what we call rates or land taxes, where the government will value your land at a specific price. It's not exactly what the real estate market value would be. It is based on the rates or the land tax you would pay. And it's always lower though, so if that's council, if it's government, if it's a government authorised price, that may be why. I'm not saying there's no questions to ask here, Dan, but that's my counter argument here.
No, of course it is, I'm just saying that it's an incredibly good deal for both clubs.
But I suppose you could make the argument, like the three of us have been to the San Siro. There's not much else in that district apart from the San Siro, so maybe the valuation is low for a reason.
No, of course, what my point being that if you were to sell that land to private, like, I'm not.
Like a construction firm that wanted to build.
If you were to sell then not to, if.
800 apartments.
Obviously, it's, it's, we're talking like hypothetically, but if you were to sell that land to a private company, that doesn't happen to one either club and the private company went, you know what, we're going to tear the San Siro down and we're going to build apartment blocks. They will be able to do that. Now, this is not going to happen because as David pointed out, there are strict guidelines about what private individuals or private companies in this case can and cannot do. But it's an incredibly good deal for both clubs, which brings me to another point. If the San Siro goes ahead and is built, this is going to be a game changer, not just for Milan, but for Italian football. Because you're going to have two already, two of the biggest clubs building a plush new stadium, bringing in an enormous amount of revenue, more than other clubs. And, you know, we've seen the likes of Atalanta and the likes of Napoli punching above their ways from a financial standpoint. Napoli are slightly different because they are bankrupt by De Laurentiis. But you remember what happened when Juventus built. Italy is probably the only ground, the only, the only country I should say, where building new grounds translates into success, which is something that doesn't happen in England because Arsenal and Spurs have been banking this room for a long time. Everton have done it now with, oh, let's build a new ground because we need more money, because money will translate to success. Except that it doesn't happen because TV revenue is so, it's so high in England that other clubs can still manage in, you know, old grounds, such as United, such as Liverpool to an extent.
And Arsenal were more successful before they moved into the Emirates.
In Italy, if anything, the opposite is true.
Yeah, because there's so few new grounds, when Uve got the Alia on the stadium, obviously there was a conversion of factors, you had Conte come in and Pirlo come in and Bonucci and Chiellini come into their prime as well. But the revenue that Uve generated from the stadium season and season that meant they could sign Higuain, Dybala, Ronaldo.
Financial fair play.
Yeah.
Because this is going to skew the balance of Italian football potentially for decades to come. Because neither club can, can live with this.
Just with Juventus though, their stadium situation was a nightmare before Juventus Stadium.
Oh yeah, the Dilly Albi was, was a dump.
It was something that had to be done, especially from Italy's, probably the biggest club in Italy and the most successful club in Italy it is hands down. They had to do something.
Yeah.
And Juventus Stadium is a great little stadium, it's not little, it's like medium, but it's good impact in there, you feel the vibe, the acoustics sensational. And from the outside, you know, the aesthetics of it, beautiful. It's like, it's like Udine as well, a very, very nice looking sleek stadium from the exterior. And a place like Udine really needs that because to attract football fans to a place that's not easy to get to, you have to fly into Verona or Venice and then drive an hour.
I mean, the stadium itself is easy to get to because it's like, you need to walk 45 minutes from town to get there.
Okay, so this is, okay, the, the overall theme here is that the San Siro is no longer able to meet the demands of tomorrow's football, yes?
No, yes, but also no, because I read the UEFA report in this and the headline is the San Siro. So UEFA have a list of requirements the stadium need to adhere to in order towards major competition. San Siro was stripped of the Champions League final 2027, which is now.
Atlético, god.
Atlético, yeah, beat the one in Metropolitano. But when you actually look at the list of requirements, some of the requirements are requirements that are, it doesn't take much investment to solve them out, for example, the top line is 50% of them aren't met. But when you actually delve into them, the requirements are such as, for example, the VIP, the area, and I am mentioning only the one that sticks in my head. So there is a requirement for the area welcoming the VIP to be 14 metres wide, for example. The San Siro's is nine metres wide, so it's not like it's a structural, it has a massive structural problem. Or there's, could be something like.
It's just requirements to make the people feel like it's a VIP experience.
So you know, it doesn't, you're not talking about billions worth of investments here, you know, some of them.
Modifications.
Yeah, yeah.
The railings would be nice, I don't trust those railings, you know, when you're, when you're trying to ride, my feet don't even fit in that walking space.
The toilets, the toilets aren't for the faint-hearted either, to be honest with you.
No, you need to have a, a strong stomach to go there.
And even, even the lift that takes you up to the press box.
Complimentary mask and nose pegs upon entering the bathroom.
The lift that takes you up to the press box, we've all been in there a couple of times, it's not ideal.
Can they at least keep those bars that are in the, in those big columns, the spirals in each corner when you look out? It's like you've entered a village bar, but it's in the stadium.
Want one bar person for 400 people?
Yeah, and the line up, that is not a line up because Italians don't know how to line up, let's be honest.
Yeah, but no, I mean, so the San Siro could be, it could be addressed. That's, that's actually the, the big sticking point for a lot of people who are now saying, well, there are issues, they can be addressed. Why are they not being addressed? And obviously, as Emmett pointed out, we all know that it's a matter of stadiums these days are not just football benches anymore. They need to be, that is a very linked in term for that which escapes me.
They're convention centres.
They are destinations.
Yeah, they, they have to host concerts and NFL and basketball or whatever.
Conference centres, you know, it has to be a point of, a technical point of like, it needs to be high tech, that's my point. Like if you go to the, the Olimpico, they host the social football summit there, there's conference rooms, there's media rooms and they're kind of up to date. I'm not sure if San Siro has those because I haven't been in them, but even like we've been on the.
I wouldn't describe the Olimpico as ITech either.
Italian standard, excuse me. All roads lean to the, lean to the Olimpico's media conference rooms.
But San Siro is the turntable, the Olimpico is the iPod first generation. Everywhere else in the world has already gone up to like.
I think we should talk in PS1, PS2, PS3 terms, right?
Yeah, actually, so.
The San Siro would be the original Nintendo.
Yeah, ironically, the San Siro, and there was a really good piece on The Athletic by Jameson Castle about this. A lot of people of like young, way younger than us, love the San Siro because of video games.
Really?
Because.
Because of FIFA and Pro EVO and.
It was, I think it was one of the, were the first, if not the first ground to be licensed on Pro EVO, long before Pro EVO then licensed.
Yeah, I love that.
But anyway, going back to your point, yes, they do need to be more modern.
Yeah.
But my question to you both is, as you said, this is Italy. Are we really, really, really sure that this thing is getting built in seven years?
Exactly.
I think there's going to be appeals and appeals and appeals and even more appeals, but the thing about it is.
More than appeals and appeal.
Yeah, the appeal of the appeal of the appeal. But I think at the heart of it is what we talked about. If Italy can somehow bring five host cities together for Euro 2032, if Milan is, Milan obviously arguably the most cosmopolitan and sophisticated city that Italy has. You know, it lingers itself to London in that respect. If Milan is not included in five cities to host the Euros, that's an embarrassment of epic proportions for a city of Milan's stature.
And it's worth mentioning that that may be the case even if the San Siro goes ahead. Because even if they start building it, which we should point out that as far as I know, work cannot begin.
Until 2027?
Until 2027 and I am fairly sure that there is mechanism in the Italian core system, which if you appeal something while the decision is being taken, that particular, whatever you're appealing against cannot move forward.
Hmm, until that appeals.
Until that appeal.
So Simonelli, the, well Serie A and the FIGC are both in support of the, you know, rebuilding, total demolishing and rebuilding. The two clubs are as well, it's going to reduce the capacity from 87,000 roughly to about 71 and a half. Ticket prices will inevitably go up, something, someone has to pay for this eventually, the clubs are paying for it.
It's always the fans, it always trickles down to the fans.
Yeah, so it's going to price out a lot of people, there's going to be less people at the games. Surely they want to keep that Tifo fan culture element in there because the fans will need to identify with this new structure if it goes ahead. And on the positive here, they could develop a structure that can play right into the fan culture. They could really emphasise that and make it a big spectacle with, you know, the best Tifos in the world. Surely they could focus on these kind of things and if not, Milan and Inter, give me a call, I've got some ideas. But it's, surely they need to harness all the, the powers of Italian football and put it into this project.
I, I think you'll see something happen where they strike a deal with the ultras. It's like, look, we'll lessen the price of tickets for you, you generate the atmosphere, you generate the buzz and we'll, we'll cut you a deal and we'll reduce ticket prices because I think it's the only way. In saying that, right, Uve, the tickets for Uve games are not cheap, but Uve sell that thing out every week. I know it's only 42,000, but you're in the Milan economically are similar, are in similar stature now. So I don't think you will see 50,000 people in a 70,000, I think both teams will sell it out every week.
And that will attract more eyeballs and more feet coming in from abroad, you would think.
I think the ultras or both clubs have been strangely silent on this. And it, it has puzzled me because these are not sort of small organised fan groups. The ultras in Italy, particularly ultras of Milan and Inter have gone, have almost got their own press office, you know, they're regularly put out statements and press releases and they.
They carry significant weight.
They do, politically and financially, I mean, there is obviously a big investigation that's been ongoing in Italy inside the two couriers and the relationship they have with their respective clubs for two years now. I think there is a scenario in which either group of ultras, probably both, could also, I can see where you're coming from, like striking up the clubs to maintain the atmosphere. But I think that this has also a scenario in which they say, you know what? We don't want any part of this modern football because this is, that is at the core of the ultra mentality, particularly in Italy.
Yeah.
Not for the European.
We saw that revolt as well with Manchester United when the Glazers came in and there was a whole sect of people that didn't want to support the club anymore and they went, they started a fourth or fifth division club.
Start FC United, yeah, yeah. But there is definitely a lamental, I'm not saying that like, that the San Siro will be empty because, you know, it's never going to be empty. But if you watch Serie A for the past, even just the past two seasons, AC Milan, Inter Milan have sort of conducted sort of like silent protests where they are in the ground, but either they don't have banners or they don't sing or they're there, but they're not there as you would expect them to be. So I think that is an issue that will have to be addressed at some point.
So I'm going to put this to the both of you, right? So I'm torn, like I said earlier, in the, in the sense that I got into Italian football. I obviously don't come from Italian heritage like Dan and you, David. I watched Italian football because it had the best players. So for Serie A to regain some of the world's best players, stadiums have to come down to generate more money. Where, I want Serie A to have the best players again after 20 years of mediocrity. Where do you two feel on this? Is the stadium the sacrifice that has to be made to see better caliber of players?
I think it is, but as I said earlier, as far as this is concerned, this is going to only skew the fact that.
Yeah, the playing field.
The playing field even more, because realistically, yeah, this is going to put a lot of money into Milan's and Inter Milan's pockets. But just in their pockets, this is not a case of redistributing funds.
It isn't going to be spread around.
Yeah.
Look, I see the positives and the negatives here, attracting those players as well. There's a certain generation of players that would be attracted to the current San Siro, but in the future, will they be attracted to that? Because they won't identify with the Maldini's and the Berrezzi's and all that. So from that perspective, I think the clubs may be on the money there. However, it's called La Scala del calcio and that's going to go, that's going to be buried, you know.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's going to be controlled demolition of, of the structure, but that's going down with it. And, you know, to me, that's a shame, actually, we've got two very good pieces, not just Dan's, we've also got, San Siro, a maiden voyage to one of football's most majestic arenas, that's by Lauren Canning and that's on the Destination Culture website right now. And that is about a female perspective on going to the San Siro for the first time, what it felt like to be there. Also, she was alone in that experience, very good read. And of course, Dan's is the glory days and 100 years of memories, but what next for San Siro? Guys, on that question, what next? Is it going to be ready for 2032? What are the, tell us the timelines here, Dan.
So the timeline is by 2027 is going to be, that's when construction is expected to begin on the new arena. This is provided that the deal is ratified.
Expected.
And the current San Siro will stay in use?
Will stay in use technically until, well, until 2031, yeah. And then it's going to be demolished, only 90% of it is going to be demolished, it's not going to be entirely demolished. Alas, the red girders will go, the spirals will also go as well.
They'll have a museum there and I guess a training field.
The second tier is a listed, San Siro was a listed building until it was sold to the clubs. Being a listed building means it could not be torn down. For reasons that are quite frankly beyond my understanding, only the second tier is considered as a listed building.
Okay, we should remind people, viewers that don't know much about the San Siro, it has never, it wasn't always this big since the Mussolini days. It, it was built on to in the seventies and eighties and then 1990 was built to its current stature.
The third tier was built for Italia 90 and that's kind of where the problems come with the pitch because the third tier blacked out the sun and so the grass, you get to like January and there's not a blade of grass on the pitch.
And I think, I think watching Serie A in January now, we're still okay if you watch footage from the nine, like the mid nineties, it literally is like playing a mud bath.
Because they installed a hybrid pitch, kind of like half grass, half 4G to basically combat the fact that by January it's a mud bath.
The, 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 the third tier bizarrely also only goes around three sides of the stadium. On the east side, there are only two tiers and the roof, which means that you get A, a great view over the city on a nice sunny day, which in Milan is a matter of few and far between. That also means that if you're there as a journalist and it's a 3pm kickoff in winter, you have the sun shining right into your eyes and you cannot see a single thing. And then, so that's going to be, the stadium is going to be built by between 2027, 2031. Obviously UEFA are going to need at least six months because you need to run like, they call them test events. So basically, Everton have done it more recently, in, you build a 60,000 capacity stadium, you need to have a couple of events where you have 10,000 people in because it's not about the safety of the stadium, it's about.
Do they even have 10,000 fans anymore, Everton?
They've got loads of them, you'll be surprised. It'll, it's how they get to the train station, how they get, you know, how they get out of the ground and so on, the access in and out. Then, you know, you have, you need to have a couple of test events. But the ideal scenario for both clubs is that by 2032, Serie A will be played at the San Siro and there'll be no, it's not here that we know now. For all we know, the new San Siro may also be not named San Siro because I suppose at some point naming rights.
Well, I guess the suburb is called San Siro for those people that don't know, calling it the San Siro, Italians will always pull you up on calling it, it's not called the San Siro, but in the English vernacular, we kind of say that, right? But the suburb is called San Siro, it's an inner western suburb of Milan and the, the name of the stadium is technically the study of Giuseppe Meazza, named after a player that played for both clubs.
So, although that was only named, you know, only in, I think there was only the name in 1980 because for the first 40 years of his existence, it was called San Siro. But my question to you both is, while we're talking about the future is, doing the research for my piece, I've come across a lot of, you know, different opinions and a lot of people arguing the pros and the cons of building a new ground and demolishing the existing one. The main sticking point seems to be that from both sets of fans, like why are we sharing the ground with our archivals? Because do you think that this still makes sense? Is there an outdated?
They have the option to buy, they have bought land.
Bought, bought clubs had bought.
Yeah, because Milan had bought in where, San Donato.
Which is in the south west of Milan.
And Inter bought in Razzano.
Do you think that might have affected the cheaper price that they've been given now?
I, to be honest, I think it was power moves from both teams. They wanted to stay where they are, but they're like, if you won't give us what we want, we will go to the outer burbs of Milan.
We'll call, we'll call your bluff, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean.
I mean, getting one stadium built is bad enough, trying to get two built in Italy is, that's a hill to bury.
Two clubs that went almost bankrupt over the past 15 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I think no matter who was going to come in, would come in with money, Milan and Inter are those iconic global brands that someone's going to take over anyway.
They are not exactly clubs, they are not clubs that are like flush with Loni at the minute.
Sure, but still they still have the power in, in Italy, let's be honest, the power is in the north, despite Napoli.
No, no, what I meant to say like, I think that's why they, the two, sort of the stadium each was never a viable solution.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I agree with that point. Wembley though, they've, they've been comparing, the reasoning behind this, that most of the people that are making the decisions, their reasoning is Wembley came down, so can the San Siro? What have we got to say to that?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought it up because the architect that designed Wembley are the same architect that have been hired to redesign the San Siro.
You're not a fan of Wembley, I take it?
Um, no, I, I, look, I'm not an architect, I am absolutely, I mean, I've got nothing to say as far as the architecture goes. But I find the fun that Marotta and Simonelli both mentioned Wembley as if this was this great example.
Justification, yeah.
This great example of, you know, modern times, um, replacing the old romantics who like living in the bygone era. Wembley ended up costing, uh, over five hundred million of, it was over five hundred million of a budget.
It's never under.
It's.
You build a shed and it's never under.
Incredibly dysfunctional venue insofar as the like getting to Wembley and away from Wembley is a nightmare.
Yeah.
Wembley is what, twenty five year, twenty years?
Very suburban though. It is very suburban.
Twenty years old and it already looks dated. It's a terrible experience whether you're there for a gig or you're there for football. It's terrible.
Whether you're there for a Euro final to see Italy win.
Whether you're there as a journalist or you're there as a fan, it's terrible.
Yeah.
And that is before we even get to the fact that like everything in there is overpriced.
What's a stadium they should be looking up to? That, that someone's been to here because I've been to Wembley. Of course, as a fan, when you go in there, it's very different to going in as a media journalist, for example, but.
Yeah.
I've been to London Stadium.
I've been at Tottenham Stadium and it feels like you're.
In an airport.
In an airport or like a spaceship. But in saying that, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that English atmospheres are dull. They're not as vibrant as you would say.
I, I think that Tottenham is much better than Wembley.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent it's a lot better. It's, it's more the example that I would go for rather than Wembley.
If, if you're talking infrastructure, I think Tottenham has to be the leading line.
And it's the newest, right?
Yeah.
When it was, it was opened two, three years ago?
Two, three, yeah.
Uh, not be more.
And they've got NFL there, they've got concerts, it's like, it's obviously giving a boost to North London.
Yeah.
Wembley is, I can, I mean, I can see why it's held as the benchmark in Italy because, you know, share this with the San Siro, you know, both, you know, um, footballing cathedrals and whatnot. And the old Wembley was around shackled by the time it was turned down. You know, anyone who went to the toilet at Wembley will know what I'm talking about. But.
I actually did go to the toilet. It was, it was when England were winning one nil and I made that sacrifice. Just to let all the Italian fans know, the sacrifice that I made was thinking, if I go to the tour that Italy will score, but I'll miss the goal, but it's something I need to do for Italy. And it happened. I literally was just shaking it off and then come out and hear the roar. And the roar wasn't that big because the roar through the whole game was like seventy five thousand people. That was deafening. But the roar was just confined to where my toilet was. I knew that was the Italian fans. Came out, hugged the first bloke, had no idea who it was, but anyway, go on. Toilet was, experience was great for me, by the way.
No, the current toilets are fantastic compared to the old ones, absolutely. Um.
But I think, isn't the point always made by Marotta and, you know, that it's, look, Wembley was historical, but it had to be pulled down. We have to do the same with San Siro.
But there's also the, the thing that I, I think that is, is a significant difference between the fact that Wembley is a national stadium. It's not the stadium of any one club.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
And I think that's a big fact, you know, it, it wasn't a case of like, we need to pull it down and team the place, Wembley, we'll have to move.
Yeah.
It was a case of like, okay, we can afford to pull it down, then England team can play across the country for a few years.
Yeah, exactly. After Wolverhampton, we go.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got a question. I want you to assume the identity. Who, who is pro ripping the San Siro down and who's not? Dan, are you pro?
No.
Okay, Emmett?
I would say.
You're more.
I'm more pro because I want to see the best players in Serie A again.
I'm going to give you a question each. You have to argue. You're obviously the romantic that wants the San Siro to stay up.
Been said before.
You old romantic, you.
Uh, okay, so you're going to argue for the romantic side here. You're going to argue for the, let's rip it down, let's rebuild.
Right.
Okay, Dan, go first.
Real Madrid and Barca, okay, Real Madrid have redeveloped Santiago Bernabeu. If they can do it and keep history while obviously making a modern arena to sort of match all the needs of modern football. AC Milan, Inter Milan should be able to do the same.
Okay, all right. And Emmett?
I think if we want to see, a couple of years ago, we seen that Calcio was back, promo was made by Serie A. It wasn't, we all knew that. But if we want to see Calcio get back somewhere to where it used to be, we need a strong Inter, we need a strong Milan and the only way to compete with the giants of the European game is a new stadium, increased revenue on match days. It's as simple as that. It comes down to economics. That's the world we live in.
Comes down to economics. Those who are in favour of keep the San Siro will forward you Emmett's address so you can meet him face to face and you can argue the point. But look, Calcio is back. I guess it is to a certain degree. You want it to be back to where it was in the past. And to get to the past, we need to go to the future somehow. It's a weird way, but I guess for people that aren't used to Italian football, if you're new to it, Italian football was at its best in the past.
Yeah.
Trying to get back to that by transposing it into the future.
I just don't think that no matter how much money you raise, much the revenue, yeah, it'll bridge the gap, but. But the elephant in the room here is.
But then it's also, we get in another thing is that.
The elephant in the room, to be right.
But if Italy, if Italy has new stadiums, it looks better on TV. If it looks better on TV, more people watch. If more people watch, the value increases. That's my argument.
Okay, we're going to leave it there.
I have some beings that I.
Next time, gents, we need an elephant. So it is in the room. So we can just grab the elephant when Dan makes that statement. Let us know what you think in the comments. Should the San Siro be torn down? Should they build a new one or should they modernise it? We've got the two arguments there from our resident experts, Dan and Emmett. Of course, where do we look to in the future? Let us know your thoughts on twenty thirty two and the Euros. Can the San Siro actually be rebuilt in time? Let us know. This has been a very informative discussion, gents, and look forward to touching on this again soon.